I began conversation around this topic of student behavior with our employees several weeks ago, actually, even before the end of the school year. As you know, I meet with teachers of the year and employee of the year ambassadors, as well as my community leader ambassadors. And one of the topics that could not be included in our conversation as a growing national rhetoric was student behavior. What are you experiencing? What do I need to know? And what do we need to be thinking about? And so those conversations began toward the end of the school year, and then shortly after the school year, the week of June 6th, I had that same conversation specifically with principals across all levels. And so the feedback that I received already ultimately echoes much of what we've heard at a national level. Students are struggling with self-regulation, having come out of two years of trauma. And sometimes, and it's beyond just the uncertainties and inconsistencies that came with COVID, because let's not forget, life didn't give us any other breaks in the midst of managing a worldwide pandemic. Life tragedies of family loss, financial insecurity, not the least of which is sometimes can include neglect and abuse. And so our students, our young ones, as much as we have hailed them as resilient, probably have not been as resilient as we would have wanted them to be, given everything that they faced. And so the feedback I received is their behavior is at higher levels, inappropriate behavior than we've experienced before. Particularly in those moments of transition, when we think of students who go from sixth to seventh grade, that is a significant period of transition. From eighth grade to ninth grade, that's another significant period of transition in the midst of all of the other uncertainties and inconsistencies. But interestingly, what I also heard from educators was, it's not just those pivotal moments of transition, it's the micro moments of transition throughout the day that we see the greatest departure from positive self-regulation. Class change, teacher change, moving from classroom to cafeteria, moving from media to art. And if we pause, are we that surprised? As we experienced and had to manage some significant staff inconsistencies as well. Our kids had to experience more teacher transitions, particularly this last year, than they've had to in the past. That's one of the very detrimental implications of workforce shortage. And to take nothing away from our teachers, they did a valiant job of standing in the gap and helping us get through the challenges. But what we also heard is the reinforcement that clear, explicit communication of expectations, utilizing common vocabulary are critical as our kids have experienced all of this trauma in their lives. I had shared recently by Ms. Moore, and she heard it put this way, "Research," and I hadn't read this, but I think it'll resonate with you. "Research identifies that a person, a child, a brain that has experienced trauma craves pattern, predictability, and certainty to break the negative impact of trauma." It makes sense. What triggers and fosters dysregulation? Dyscontinuity, adjustment, uncertainty, inconsistency, particularly in our kids as they're developing and learning to manage life's normal uncertainties, not even the heightened levels of uncertainty. So then began the process of how do we respond? How do we begin taking steps to say, okay, we recognize some of the challenges, how do we begin putting things in place? I would suggest, and I make this appeal right now publicly and explicitly and intentionally, that it is going to require all that. We experienced the uncertainty, the inconsistency as a community. No one was immune from the impacts, the realities of COVID, and all of the adjustments that were necessary. And so we have got to come together and work together as a community for our kids, for their success. You've heard me mention at least a couple of times the new mentoring framework that has been recently developed. We are prepared and ready to launch that availability to our community. And to our community, I say, do you care about kids? Whether you have one in our schools or not, I have yet to find someone who doesn't. And say, then let's commit to mentoring a young life. We have kids right now in every one of our schools who need a consistent, meaningful adult relationship with someone in their life, not just to check in on them and make sure they got lunch money, but to check in on them and help them aspire to goals that they set for themselves in conversation and discussion with a mentor. Goals towards academic success, goals toward behavioral success, goals towards aspiring to accomplish something in their future and help that young person stay focused on that. In addition, we need our parents. We need our parents to come alongside us, partner with their child and their school to ensure their ongoing success. But we've heard from parents, I've heard from our parents, our parent leadership team have said, we need more help and support, particularly in areas of mental health and academic supports. We are currently developing and will be launching this fall an ambitious parent academy opportunity across multiple platforms, regions, in-person, online, Zoom, that address things like proactive social media engagement and monitoring with your child, reinforcing positive self-regulation strategies, understanding that common language we use in our schools that you can reinforce in the home. We have parents who want to become youth mental health first aid completers. Love that. That is a state initiative where all of our employees have to be trained in youth mental health first aid, I think by 2020, the end of 2023. Understanding the signs and triggers for social emotional stress, both in students and adults, homework help and homework structures for support, focus, our tool for engaging with a child, their academic progress, and using that tool to elevate engagement and product to support, as well as identifying the signs of vaping and drug use in your child. We are digging into the data, and I will tell the board and our community, we need to be concerned. The vaping, tobacco use of our youth, all the way down into our elementary schools, has never been higher. It's a concern. We've got to first be aware, and then we've got to educate ourselves, and we've all got to work together, help our kids understand the dangers and the health risks that they put themselves in with that type of behavior. What's next for our schools? We hosted conscious discipline training across the states, actually, multiple states last week. We are seeing the positive results, both quantitatively and qualitatively, with conscious discipline. It became a prominent topic of conversation in my principal meetings. I had two questions. I said, number one, I'll share with you in a moment, we've had anchor schools for conscious discipline. I said, number one, do you have at least pockets, classrooms where quality implementation of the strategies of conscious discipline are evident? And they said, yes. My next question, it's one thing that you've got quality implementation, what I really am interested in, when you have quality implementation, are you getting positive results? And unequivocally, the response was yes. So I'll take some time in a moment to talk about what is conscious discipline and why is it effective in a moment, because I know there's been a lot of discussion about it. But also, positive behavior intervention support, PBIS, we know is effective both at the elementary and the secondary level. Sources of strength as a suicide prevention program, student-led but teacher facilitated, has been enormously positive in our schools. At the secondary level, we'll be looking for the best classroom structure to implement. Conscious discipline is a classroom structure at the elementary level. We have not definitively identified that classroom structure for secondary. That's part of the conversations I'll be engaging in moving forward. But additionally, at the district level, we have administrator training at the end of July that dives into our discipline plan to ensure that there is consistent utilization and pursuit of fair, firm discipline and consistent utilization of consequences. While we also know that dysregulated behavior, inappropriate behavior only followed up with a consequence is never going to be as mitigating as the path of inappropriate behavior consequence with coaching, with training, with conversation around, okay, now let's go back and understand how you could have positively reacted and responded to the situation you found yourself in that led to the negative behavior. And so we'll be having those conversations with our administrators in the coming weeks as well. In addition, I've challenged Ms. Moore and her team, a little bit of buzz going on, but to scale up conscious discipline for all elementary schools in the next two years. So let's take a moment and talk about conscious discipline. It's a framework that I want you to take away as developmentally appropriate, but I can't say it any better than that second statement. All aspects of conscious discipline focus on creating a safe, connected environment for children to learn and practice the skills needed for healthy, social, emotional, and academic development. That's what we all want for every one of our kids. Conscious discipline focuses on four brain smart areas. I wish this were numbered, but if you top left, unite, bringing kids together and uniting as a class and as a group. Two, disengaging with the stress, the factors that may have come in with them. I often call them the invisible things in the backpack that come with the kid to the school. But helping a kid identify that they may be feeling stress and help them work through breathing techniques, stretching, and releasing the stress that they came with into the classroom so that they can focus on the lessons ahead. Connecting, connecting the students to the teacher and each other helps them create and maintain a community of shared learning and motivation to learn. And finally, commit. This is a strategy where the teacher reminds students that they're a safe keeper and literally says, it's my job to keep you safe. Talk through the how, and then students respond and share, it's our job to help you keep us safe. So a shared community in that classroom. We have, I mentioned, we have launched what are called anchor sites. Last year, we had eight schools. This year, we've already identified six schools who will become anchor sites. That is a comprehensive implementation of conscious discipline that includes training the summer as well as coaching, where district staff go in and come alongside the school as they do professional development, but also support teachers as they implement the strategies of conscious discipline. Here, I've captured some of the feedback we've received from principals in relation to their experiences with conscious discipline. I'll give you a moment to take one and just read the feedback that's been provided. And then I'll share some of the feedback we've received, actually, from teachers, several items there. Select a box and read the feedback that we've received. And I'll also add that the data indicates quantitatively that those classrooms and schools that have implemented conscious discipline equality are experiencing reduced inappropriate behaviors than those classrooms and schools that aren't. Part of why we know this is the right and effective pursuit for all of our schools. So next steps, I'm not going to suggest we've captured all of what needs to be done, should be done, or may need to be done moving forward, because there is one thing certain in life, and that is tomorrow is uncertain. So I am prioritizing ongoing stakeholder engagement and feedback conversations to begin the week of July 11th, and will include teachers, again, more in an elementary discussion group and secondary discussion group, because my first conversations realized that it's a bit of a different conversation at the elementary and secondary level. Continuing to engage with administrators, both in elementary and secondary, student services, they're an integral part of this conversation, and I want to connect directly with our student services professionals as they provide a tremendous amount of support and get their feedback and input. I already referenced our parent leadership team members, be reaching out to some of our parents who have been engaged with us through PLT over the last several months. As well as once school starts, I will reengage with my student government leaders, as well as middle school and sixth grade representatives around this conversation of student behavior. What do we need to know? How do we need to respond? And how do we affirm you as our priority in this organization? And I anticipate providing the school board an update late July, August, of where those conversations are leading and any changes or additions to the efforts and the actions that I've already described. Lastly, I want to provide the board and a community just a highlight of what will be my focus for our leaders when we come together on July 19th for the superintendent summit. I recently was introduced to this leadership book. It's been around for about 10 years, titled Lead Simply: How to Create That Special Team of People. It is not education leadership oriented, it is general leadership focused, but is built on three principles that I suspect will resonate with you. One, model, the behavior you want to see in the people that you lead. Two, connect with the people that you lead. And three, involve them as much as possible. And I challenge my leaders this morning, model begins with modeling the attitude that you want to see reflected in those that you lead across your school, begins with you. And two, it includes modeling the instructional practices that we want to see inside our classrooms for the benefit of our kids, which means you're going to have to connect with more people across your campus, more individuals in your school, because you can't be in every classroom and be that model for every person. And you're not always the best person to model instructional practice, but you know the people who are. You've got to connect and inspire them to take on that role. And if there's anything we've learned about the two challenges I've talked about this morning, is not one of us can accomplish, overcome that challenge by ourself, by our own leadership. We have to involve the extended community. We've got to reach out to our extended educators and say, I need you to be part of, I need to involve you in this conversation, and the actions we need to take as a school to build the culture, maintain and sustain the culture we need for our kids and for each other. And that includes parents, includes our community. And so that will be the focused message of my conversation, my charge, if you will, to our leadership going into next school year, as we tackle the challenges ahead, for no more worthy cause than our kids and their future. With that, I send my appreciation to the board for your allowance of the time. I trust you found the information beneficial, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board members have questions? Ms. Campbell?
Yeah. First of all, thank you to you and your team. This is a lot of work and a lot of intentionality and some really big issues that I know are not unique to Brevard, but this is our sphere of influence, and so I appreciate that. Actually, I want to start with the end, the three things you mentioned from the book, the model, connect, involve, sounds like good classroom instructional strategy, right? Modeling what you're trying to teach and then connecting that with students and then involving them as much as possible in their own learning, so I love that.
Amen. Great, great translation.
I want to go back to the retention and recruitment efforts. As you were talking, you had a Children's Hunger Project logo on one of those, and because I serve on that board, something came to mind, it's very practical that I think we might be able to do. I know one of the grants that that organization has been trying to get involved in requires them to, they're asking them if they provide resources to the families that they provide the meals to. And so, and I know to put in the bags for us handout, I was like, you know, we have to go through the district office for any materials that you might pass out, but if it's materials from the district, then, you know, if we're connecting families who have a need with potential job opportunities, I think that might be a good resource, so I'd encourage if you guys could reach out to Cheryl Kaminsky and touch base with her, are the job opportunities, the new Florida's coming, is that something that they can stick in the meal pack as they, I mean, they won't go out until school starts, but then I actually may back up, because we're doing summer feed and read right now. So any student who's involved in the United Way programs, summer feed and read programs, they actually could get that information out to them this summer, because they have ongoing summer feeding programs, so just wanted to throw that out.
Love it. Thank you.
As we look at, you know, one of the priority employee groups, the teachers in particular, I just wondered, what is, because, you know, a lot of times people get, I don't have an education degree, you know, or, you know, they find themselves like myself, you know, haven't taught in years, all my teaching certificates in the places where I have had them have expired, or we have a ton of people who are moving in from out of state. What does the path to the classroom look like for someone like that who maybe hasn't taught in many years, and so they don't have current certification? What does that look like for them who might say, okay, I'm ready to go back into the classroom now?
Yeah, great question. I literally say everywhere I go, if you hold a four-year degree, there is virtually a pathway to being a classroom teacher for you that we will partner with you to do, and you don't have to wait to do it. You can start teaching, earning a full-time salary, and we partner with you to get your certification, to get all of the credentials that you may need if you are a non-formally college of education degree holder, or you are a former educator certified in another state, but it's lapsed and that type of thing. Our recruitment retention office literally walks that out, one-on-one with any candidate and helps them navigate that pathway. Let me reiterate, virtually any four-year degree holding individual, and even some not four-year degree holding individuals, particularly for positions in career and technical education, because we have found some very creative, I'll say, pathways for individuals who don't currently hold a four-year degree, but in career and tech ed, their experience can meet some of those qualifications. Don't let your belief or sense that you don't meet the qualifications prevent you from reaching out to us and talking. There are so many potential pathways, whether you're a former teacher, you need to get your credentials here in Florida, people don't realize, we have reciprocate.
Reciprocity.
That word. I've used my word limit today, so, but we walk that out with folks every single day, all the time, and we are absolutely committed to doing that with any candidate individual.
Good. And that was my second question was, what if they don't have a degree at all, or not a degree at all, but don't have an education degree, but they have a bachelor's and others? So thank you for addressing that. And I know that's something we've done in the past, I just, you know, thank you for addressing that. I want to know how fast, you know, can we get those people? And there's some principals, one of my principals at one of the high schools where I serve in particular, happens to be really fantastic at recruiting people who hadn't even thought about being a teacher before, but maybe they were working as a sub, and he was like, hey, I've got a job for you. And it's just great at walking through, Dr. Harris is really great at walking people through that process and developing a new career for many, so appreciate that we're doing that and we're moving them through quickly. I think that's all I have.
Thank you. I'm thinking that.
I'm not really going to address the recruitment and retention. I feel like us as an organization, as well as our community, is well aware that that is a five-alarm fire and is a priority and a focus, because we cannot function and we cannot educate our students if we don't have educators, staffers, to do it. But I do just kind of want to just expand on the conscious discipline. I appreciate you going into detail a little bit about what it is, because, you know, unfortunately it's become a little bit a part of the culture war conversation. But I just want to highlight as well, this isn't something that's new to Brevard Public Schools. This is something we've been using for years, we've been using it in our pre-Ks, we've been using it in our elementary schools, it's just kind of growing and expanding because we've seen the benefits of it. And it's a program that's not only used in Brevard Public Schools, it's used across the state and across the nation. And just a little fun fact, the author, Becky Bailey, well, actually, I don't know if she's a resident of Central Florida anymore, but she was a resident of Central Florida, and I actually think she was from Brevard at some point, which is, you know, pretty cool, rooted here. But one other thing to focus on is, this isn't necessarily a behavioral tool for children. It's really intended for the adults. It's to kind of change the mindset of an adult to figure out how to self-regulate themselves and how to intervene with that child's behavior in a positive way. And I've spoken to, as a speech therapist, many parents who've utilized this program and tool just as a parent and communicating with their kids. And, you know, once the adult works through this framework and changes their behavior, it naturally makes it easier for them to address the behavioral concerns of the children in their lives or in their classroom. So it's a really, really awesome tool, but really, it's just changing that thought process. And I appreciate the way that you highlighted it there, because I think it has been made to be this boogeyman and this crazy program, when in reality, it's just a really smart way to think about stuff and just kind of change your mindset, so thank you for that.
Thank you, Ms. Jenkins. Anybody else?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I was going to wait. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. Some of the things, and Russell, thank you for all those videos, thank you for everything that you've done. You're right, Dr. Mullins, telling the story of the community to each one of the schools is important, plus it's a sense of pride for the teachers to be able to see that. Community needs to know what those schools are doing, and Russell and his communications team have done amazing. I was looking at everything that you guys have done, and to be honest with you, I would challenge another district to be doing as much as you're doing. So I wanted to give you guys all the credit in the world for everything that you guys are doing. One of the problems that we run into with retention and recruitment is that there are so many things that we can be doing, and you just can't do all of them. So everybody's going to sit there and say, well, you didn't do this, right? But literally, like, I would press to see videos in schools and meeting with Eastern Florida State College, these are amazing things that our district's doing, so I wanted to say thank you for all of that. Couple of things that I was thinking about to throw on the table here, since we're all here. One of the things that I ran into, and these are just some suggestions, Dr. Mullins, and you can take them if you want, but we have this amazing thing that was developed years ago for career fairs for applicants who have their degrees and are ready to come over, and our principals go in and give binders. One of the things we could do is, there's many people that were in the community that were trying to gain access to that career fair, but because they weren't invited and they didn't have the proper process, they weren't allowed to get in there, and that's rightfully so, because we're giving out binders, we don't want somebody we don't know coming in that wasn't part of the application. But I really feel there's a massive amount, and we had spoken about this, of parents who stay at home with their children and then just continue to stay at home, but were former teachers. And I think that if we were able to target them, and part of it's not go to Beacon and fill it out, but let's have a career fair for all the individuals that may be wanting to come back, meet our principals, talk to them, there might be an opportunity there, some sort of a summit or whatever it is to call them. And we were talking, Dr. Mullins and I were talking, and there are data points inside of our systems that we can make public records requests to other entities to find out who is inside the FRS for educators, so we can identify all of them. It's not like we have to just kind of look for them, we can make a public records request, I have the data too, to a degree, but the thing is, is that we can identify who is teachers that are under the age of 55 that might be targets for us, and then we can invite them all. I mean, Dr. Mullins and I even talked, I joked around about it, I said, give me a list, let's just go knock on some doors and see what happens. So I think that there's an opportunity to try to create a machine to reach out to the people that are already, have their degrees and everything else, and then have them know. people that are already, have their degrees and everything else, and then have them come back in. So we had talked about that. That's just a suggestion. The other thing is, is that we're noticing that a lot of our actual openings, many of them are in Title I. And it's difficult, I will be honest with everybody, Title I is, is very difficult for individuals to be a part of. There are some people that do great, some people that don't, and it's a, it's a different kind of dynamic. I would like to see if we wanted to literally put together stipends for Title I teachers. And I know that that's kind of a shot across the bow, we didn't talk about it, Dr. Mullins, but one of the problems that we have is, is that as a teacher, I'll be honest with you, I've taught in three different schools, and there was one school that was particularly very easy compared to the other schools. I had less discipline, less issues, less, less need to teach the kids as much as I did, less follow-up from the kids, less, I mean, everything. There's a difference, right? And I think that there's that amount of extra work that goes into being a Title I sometimes. We may need to look at to honor that, move forward. Because if we're going to run into a situation where we have vacancies at our Title I schools, we need to do something to honor the extra work. And if somebody wants to come to me and say, put together an argument that the Title I schools are actually working more, very easy to see when you look at the discipline differences and stuff like that. Also, one of the veins of my existence, Eastern Florida State College has a teacher program. They've gone out and applied for and received the opportunity to do one, I think it's like second grade or something like that, right? Just so everybody knows, every time we put together a program in the past, University of Central Florida has vetoed the program from being in existence. So let me explain how that works for everybody. We apply for a program, and it has to go to the state. There's a veto program that says we already have that. Now, it's needed because there's a lot of colleges that just spring up and start offering programs, and then it dilutes the talent. But literally what happens, just so you know, is we're allowed to have the kids go through our program, but then they have to do their final year or two over at Eastern, or over at University of Central Florida and do their internship. So while they're over there, what do you think UCF's doing? They're plucking all our people. And I'll be honest with you, if I'm a young kid and I'm going over there, I'm a whole heck of a lot want to go to Orange County and party in Orange County and grow up there at a higher salary than here. We've got to break that. One of the things that I think I heard when I was speaking, it was at, I forget if it was at our School Board Association meeting or somewhere, one of the superintendents had said that they had polled all the people in their district. They said, out of, oh, it was a breakout session at the Florida School Board Association. This was amazing, was that they polled all, they looked at their data, and they said, how many of our teachers have graduated from our schools? And they got that number. And then they said, let's do an aggregate number of how long those people stay in our schools. It was off the chart. So meaning that we may be able to take, you know, a handful of 25 teachers that come in from our Eastern Florida State College program, and it might seem like a little amount, but if they stay 20 years, that's like having 150 teachers that constantly are grinding, right? So there's, and, and, Dr. Mullins, I'm not saying you haven't with Eastern Florida State, I just wanted my fellow board members to know the BS that goes on when we're trying to do this. I think this is a great point to try to say, let's open that throttle. I mean, we've got the applications, let's roll, right? That's all. And then retention, I know this sounds like a broken record, but I traveled to Escambia County four years ago, five years ago, and sat with the, what was at the time Superintendent of the Year for the whole state of Florida, and one of the particular programs that he was highlighted on is his PAR program. Now, we do a mentor program that I was actually a part of when I was a teacher. And I will tell you, it looks good on paper, and there are about a quarter to a third of the teachers that really do it with effectiveness. And then there are other teachers that don't have the opportunity because of schedules and everything else to do that. The PAR program is a program that they set up because they're competing with Santa Rosa, because Santa Rosa County fights for their people, to literally give the opportunity for those teachers to have the development that they need, the professional development. They go before our committee. The committee says, here's what it is. They have a coach that comes in and they says, this is where I have need, and then they allocate the resources for it. It is the most phenomenal program in the world. Now, it costs them about $1.7 million to do. But when I talked to the Escambia County person, and I said, or the superintendent, who was phenomenal, and his HR and everybody else, we spent like three days there, he said that the amount of money that they lose in student achievement and retraining, which is about $30,000 a teacher, so every teacher we lose is between $22,000 and $36,000, depending on the position they're in, to train to be a teacher throughout the year of professional development. Think about how much money you lose when that happens, and how much student achievement you lose when you have poor teachers that are not being supported inside your classroom. And I'm not saying that our, our teachers are not supported. We have a program, and it's a lot better than some of the other programs we have. But if we want to be the best, this program was brought to our school district five years ago. The individuals that were in charge were not, I'll just say, were not ready for this program. I was very upset with them over some of the stuff that they were doing otherwise, and they didn't have their eyes on this. The PAR program works, comes from Harvard, Harvard Law, and it's across the nation. It's literally a teacher support. Union members went, our staff went from the district. I truly believe this is something we need to look at, because this is not something that's going to go away. We're going to be in this cycle for about two or three years. This is something that we can have support for. All right. The other thing is, is, Dr. Mullins, do we have a survey of the resid, we were talking about doing a survey of the teachers that resign and retire. Do we have that survey? Do we, what do we do in that result? What are we doing there?
We do, we have an exit survey. It is, it is not mandatory participation, but we do, we do capture that data. And it has grown, if you remember, I did present our, I think it was actually part of my evaluation, my, my self-assessment. Our, the feedback we've received from those who are exiting, the, the number of people providing their feedback has grown exponentially in the last three years, as well as the positive response to Brevard Public Schools as a positive place to work, or something like that?
Pretty close.
Pretty close? Had grown significantly from a 30% a few years ago to upwards of 80% today. So short answer is yes, we do. Sometimes it's difficult to get everybody to give us the feedback.
Yeah. You're not going to give somebody that quit to do a survey. I get it. Like, I understand that, like, somebody may have had a bad situation.
I can get, I can get more feedback for you if you're interested.
Yeah, I'd like to see the results of that and then see, because one of the things that we're dealing with is, is that in the community and from some of the parents and teachers, we're hearing that discipline is what's driving our teachers' belief. That is the common theme that's out there. And it would be nice to know in a data-driven organization if that's actually the fact. So knowing that 80% of them say that Brevard Public Schools is a great place to work, well then that's different than what we're hearing, which we all know, sometimes some things can be said, but they don't always, they're not always true. So I think that exit survey's perfect for that piece. So if we can get that information, that'd be great. And then we know that, and let's just be honest, conscious discipline is something that I've supported, right? It's something that is best practices, and Ms. Jenkins is right, it's been in our system forever. I think where a lot of my questions on conscious discipline is not the actual application. What that tree right there is everything a great teacher should do, and we should continue to do those practices without a doubt. I think where it is, is once a child is still having issues inside the classroom and interrupting the other kids inside that classroom, and what we do in that moment is where I think it gets confused with the other portions of what it is. Because if you sat through that, that, I would argue, point to point, that everything that was inside that circle is beautiful teaching. The other piece is, is that that's where it is. And I think that that piece is being exacerbated because of what we're seeing from the COVID and everything else. So our discipline, to be honest, has been higher, we've had more discipline problems than we've ever had. And the reason is, is, so what's happening is, is that people are saying it's conscious discipline that's creating this, right? But I truly believe it's not the conscious discipline beginning of teaching. I truly believe it's what we do right afterwards when we're trying to work with it. I was a teacher for nine years. I wrote five referrals in nine years. And that's because I practiced everything that's inside there. But when a kid broke that rule, I sent him, and it was, they were respectful. So what I'm hearing from some of our teachers, Dr. Mullins, is that they're sending the kids down, and then they're being sent right back, right? May not be true, but that's what's happening. So I think that the argument is inside of that piece. And I would love to find out the information from the survey of resignations and retirements to tie that piece right there in to see if it's actually happening. Because we know that our discipline numbers are up. We know that's happened, whether that's going to be because of COVID, whether it's going to be because of a couple of issues. But they're making the argument that right there, we are just allowing kids to continually perpetuate, and we're trying to work with them, and they just keep violating, and we're letting them go, right? That survey and some of those other things will help us feel out that, does that make sense? All right. And then I love your idea about the letter, Dr. Mullins. If, I mean, I would do it, I think the board members would do it also. I just think a letter of appreciation to all of our staff, if there's some way that we can do that. Like, hey, I really appreciate you. I mean, I know making the argument that you're making all this money and everything, we care about you, but sometimes, and I'm guilty of it, my wife keeps telling me all the time, sometimes people just need you to listen. They don't need you to tell them stuff. They just need you to listen and tell them that you care. And I think sometimes we could do that. So if you find a vehicle, Dr. Mullins, for us to do that, I would love to just say, care about you, BPS cares about you, and we're here, you know what I mean? And it might, you might get a thousand letters back saying, you don't care about me because, but, that's part of it. And then the last piece is, and I'm sorry, you talked a lot, so I'm going to take a lot of time too. Two things. One, they've developed vapor sensors now that you can put inside of a bathroom that will tell you when one clicks. You can put cheap vapor sensors, it's audio, and it's very distinct. You can detect it. You can get vapor sensors and catch all the kids that are, right? Now, I know that it might be not something we want to do, but the cost is very low. I'll get you the information, I just found out about it two days ago. And then, last piece, Dr. Mullins.
The last one was?
No! Listen, I was a, I was a social studies teacher. I was not a math teacher. So if I say last one, we've got to keep going. All right. ALC, how do we provide not only the support for them through their mental guidance, but opportunities for them to not feel like they are ostracized from society, right? So we're putting a basketball court, been like, for two years I've been trying to get that basketball court at the South. Oh, yeah, I know. I've been playing, I challenged Dr. Mullins to basketball court down there a couple of times. But here's the thing.
I keep declining.
I've asked Paul Gibbs, but he keeps saying no, too. I'm figuring I got a better height differential on him. But the thing is, is that, is that our children who are inside those ALCs are significantly wanting to be a part of something, right? Whether they're, and I was one of those kids. I didn't go to an ALC, I didn't get expelled, but I could have. Back then, they didn't do half the stuff they do now. But I think if we give opportunities to those kids inside there, they will be better off. And I would, I would just say, Dr. Mullins, if there's a way, I know it's crazy at the ALCs right now, but I would love to have that basketball. I would love to offer opportunities to our kids in that regard because it might help with their mental health and opportunities outside of it. Job coaches, people from the community, your, your churches supporting, you know what I mean? Like, kind of that ALC gets locked down and stuff. All right. And then, no, I'm just kidding you. Okay. You don't have to look at me like that.
Ms. Belford, may I make just two quick responses? Mr., Mr. Susan, two things I did want to respond to right away. Your, your comments about Title I and recognition of service to our Title I schools, that is on our radar.
Okay.
I would echo your sentiments, and we're, we're going to continue to walk that out. There is a process, so we'll keep the board apprised. Also want to reference Eastern Florida State College. Since I've become superintendent, I have pursued that relationship on a, and a very good, I have a very good relationship with President Ritchie. We talk regularly, but his former VP of Academics, Dr. Linda Minima, now Dr. Fletcher, we have a great rapport with them. Dr. Sullivan probably is engaged with, with Dr. Fletcher and the academic team, I don't know, weekly, if not, maybe, if not monthly. I have said for years, if you can ever get a College of Education program, we will partner with you to make you the premier education training ground in the state.
In the country, in the world.
Sure.
Intergalactic.
And they are as committed to it as well. But to your point, they have been denied by the state to bring on a education program. They just, maybe two years ago, year ago, got the Elementary Science Ed program, but it's just so narrow and so, I, narrow focus that it's not meeting all of our needs. We're going to continue to pursue that. I know that they want it as well. I've literally written letters of support that go to their application at the state, and they continue to be denied.
I went as far, Doc-
That's probably as much as I can say about that right now. I don't want to, I don't want to speak disparagingly of other institutions, but we're going for it.
I don't care, I will. I went, I went to UCF and I called them out in the middle of a open forum, and I told them that that's garbage and not so nice of words. And, and I'm sorry, but our people need our students to stay in our schools. And dad gummit, you stop stealing our people and create a leverage point on us is BS. It's just BS. I say, we go, McDougal, you got, you only got a couple more months, let's go raise some havoc, let's go yell at them. No? All right. Thank you, Dr. Mullins. You only got a couple more months, let's go cause some havoc. No? All right.
You know, be careful what you ask. Dr. Mullins, thank you for this presentation and for all the work that went into it. And I want to talk about, because I think it's really, really important, I'm focusing on discipline, because the mentoring, I went online and the mentoring program that we have for our parents to go through the modules is excellent. It gives you a clear picture of what's in takes, what you need, we support you. But I think what's really just as important is the parent support that we're going to provide for our parents, because I think many of our parents are struggling themselves with discipline at their home. So I do feel that we're focusing the right way, and I just want to say that conscious discipline, you and I visited, I can't remember what school we visited, but we saw it in action, because I asked questions. I wanted to see it, and I wanted to know it was done with fidelity. And how did the students respond? And it was an elementary school, and it was amazing, the camaraderie, and even when there was discourse, how they solved the problem, without anybody getting sent to the office, without anybody having fisticuffs, if they ever still use-
Set them down.
You know? So I feel this, it's a great program. I wish we could roll it out faster, as Ms. Moore and I always talk about. But it works, and that's what we want. Because right now, our kids, as you and I have talked, I've seen a lot of expulsions, and I saw them against expulsions. Expulsions don't solve problems for these children. It just sends them home, and not always got a good place to send them. So anyhow, I'm very excited, I like the plan, and you certainly have my full support. Thank you.
I think I just heard Ms. McDougal commit that when she finishes her term on the board, she's coming back to help us with conscious discipline. Is that what you guys are?
We need mental health counselors, too. She can fill one of those positions. We'll just keep you around for a while.
I can do that.
Hey, do you hear that, Dr. Mullins?
I got it.
All righty. So I have just a few questions, comments. First of all, thank you. Phenomenal information that you shared with us this morning. Been having lots of conversations around these issues and encouraging our community that we are certainly having these conversations internally and will be coming forward with more information. So thank you for putting that all together for us. Two questions that I know the answer to, but I just want to make sure that our public hears it. Are substitutes included in the $15 per hour?
Yes.
So for all of our people out there that have been contemplating substituting, you are included in that raised to minimum wage beginning July 1?
Correct. And the other qualifications are bumped up as well, so it's not just the $15. the $15, pardon?
Through ESSR.
Yes, through our ESSR, ESSR III funding, starting this year.
Okay, super, thank you. And then, this one I know the answer to too, but I just have to get it out there, because anytime we talk about these things, I, someone seems to ask the question, crossing guards are, just for clarification, are not employed by us, right? So we don't set their salary, can you just address that?
That's correct, they are not Brevard Public School employees, they are employed by either the county or their local municipality. We do not even contract crossing guards, they are provided as a service from the respective community, so we have no control over their salary.
Thank you, thank you.
I do know, know that the county was looking at making significant raises to their own employee salaries, so I imagine they're going to give them therapy.
Yeah, just not something that we, as a board, have control over, so, because I hear that quite frequently, that you forgot the crossing guards again, and we don't forget them, we appreciate them immensely, but, but outside of our sphere of control on that one. Question, and feel free to get back to me later, but you mentioned the data that we have on our pilot classrooms for conscious discipline, a significant decrease in the behavioral issues that we're seeing in those classrooms, have we cross-tabbed to academic outcomes for those classrooms? Do we have any that we have progress monitoring information or FSA information that we could also see if there's an impact to the academics, and like I said, you don't have to answer that now, but I just think it would be interesting to take a look at.
Absolutely, I'll definitely get back with you, we have that for you and for the board.
Okay, awesome. And then, I think the last thing that I will say, and this is not, I mean, it kind of goes along with all of our retention things and, but more for our community, several of the schools are working very hard to plan, pre-planning for all of their team members to come back, several of them are reaching out to community partners to provide breakfast, lunch, recognition, and so I would encourage our community to reach out and connect with the school, I can assure you, they can all use some support with making sure that they welcome their teachers back with as much love as possible as we return to the new school year, and that may be, you know, little gifts, it may be food, it, there's, there's all sorts of things, but I would just encourage everyone, you know, pick, pick a school in your neighborhood, reach out and ask how you can help to ensure that everyone comes back to a great experience.